Start the meeting.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. I'd like to. Okay.
So.
You're good.
No, but he needs to mute his computer. Oh, okay.
So I can do that. Okay. All right, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order, the Spasable Planning Commission of July 11th, 2023. And we'll start out with a real call, please.
Thank you. So we do not have a quorum tonight. As you probably noticed, we don't have all of our commissioners up here. So I will call the names of the commissioners who are, we know are absent. Debbie Burns has notified us that she would not be able to be here tonight. And Commissioner Ottinger is in, out of town, so she is also not here tonight. Vice Chair Fritz.
Here.
And Chair Fernandez.
Here.
Okay.
All right. So before we move on. Yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead and go to item number three first. Comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda.
Do you have a comment not on the agenda? Go for it.
Go ahead.
So you have three minutes. The timer is up on the screen there. And please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Hi, I'm Carol Capria and I live at 7650 Heelsburg Avenue. And I'm here to report on the project located at 7631 and 7635 Heelsburg Avenue. And there's been an ongoing conversation about their lighting fixtures on the corner building. And then there's a little house, which is this 35 on the same property. So they turned, got rid of all the lighting on the corner piece, the 7631. And the little house also had no more lighting of the sconce style lighting with no shielding, but just these glaring light bulbs. The, the house has recessed lighting on the front porch. And they have recently got the sconce lighting back on on a timer, it appears. And it's the sconce lighting with the bulb glaring with no shielding or anything. And so it is like glaring right through our stained glass front door when it's on. It's amazing how across the street it can do that. But there's, it's just a sconce where the light bulb is just, the whole light bulb is exposed from the fixture. So I am here just to give that information. And I was thinking that that was, I think they thought they were doing everything, which they did do some. And now, and everything was off, but now it's back on again. So it's a little confusing and I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the planning commission board. Thank you.
Thank you. I have been by that site and I thought that they had removed everything. So it's helpful to know from your perspective what they have not. And I think Planner John Jay has some feedback on that.
Yeah, so I spoke to Kathy Austin, who was the project architect on that. And she had mentioned that if there are any additional complaints with the lighting and stuff like that, please let us know at the planning department. And we can, the planning department. Yeah, and then we can, yeah, so me. And then we can issue code compliance or code enforcement to get those lights fixed in, in compliance.
Yeah, so normally code enforcement are anonymous. However, you've made public comments, so obviously, and that's fine. If you send John an email describing what's not in compliance, that, that would help him to get that out to them. The, the stuff that's glaring and not shielded, that's the stuff that's not in compliance. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Chair Fernandez, we do have Kyle Falbo out on the Zoom world.
Okay, go ahead.
And Kyle, can you see the three minute timer?
Yes, I can.
All right, go ahead.
So a few different things here. First, I'm just hoping that the city and the various subcommittees and departments are well aware of the Petaluma, the grand jury report that specifically references the way which Petaluma was managing its contract services. It's my hope that our city departments are well aware of this grand jury report and is prepared for any sort of response to the way that our own city is managing its contract services. And because, you know, that I'm sure that'll be coming down the pipeline very soon. In particular, I'll reference a couple of places where our planning commission has utilized contract services that might be of interest here. One is this Objective Standards Subcommittee that was originally initiated through city council with a city council member sitting on board of that. But very quickly somehow turned into a contract services with some outside entity. But I have yet to have any sort of report out, at least at a public level that is digestible either through the city council itself or something that I can look at that defines what those objective standards were. If you recall, we had a housing development project that went through SB 35. And as a result of that, any of our subjective standards were not actually applicable at all. And so that was the drive behind the Subjective Standards Subcommittee and this contract out with a third party to produce this list of, of objective standards. Secondly, was we just recently had our housing element updated. And rather than having, as we had historically, a significant amount of public input, public, you know, public members sitting on the committee, instead that was also contracted out. So there was very little actual public input. There were surveys, but the reach of those surveys is quite limited. The demographics of that survey are quite limited. And so it's not clear that there was really the same level of public input onto that process as there was historically with our housing element. And then finally, just because I've got 45 seconds left, if you look at my virtual background, this has been driving me insane for years. We have right here the intersection of Bodega and Main. There is a traffic signal for pedestrians that when turns green, still stops westbound traffic on Bodega Avenue. The reason for this type of thing is so that people would be making, say, a right-hand turn, would not be entering that intersection and hitting somebody that's in the crosswalk. But since Main Street is a one-way street, it is not possible for a vehicle to enter into that crosswalk and hit a pedestrian. So here we have on our busiest intersection in our town, a six-second delay on every single traffic light as a result of poor programming of a pedestrian walkway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Co.
Are there any other public comments for items that are not on the agenda? I don't see anyone on the Zoom. You're here for an item, right? Yeah, okay. So that is it for public comment.
So we'll go ahead and close public comment for items not on the agenda, bring it back here and.
And if I could address one of the comments. So I won't respond verbatim, but just in terms of the question about the objective design standards. As you know, because you actually saw the initial report from the, of the existing conditions a while back. That did also go to both, to the DRB as well. But just a note for Kyle, that we do actually have the presentation and discussion of that for coming to the Design Review Board, July 25th. So again, we did a couple of preliminary, which was chapter one or chapter two of that document to both the planning commission and DRB previously. But the full draft standards will be at the July 25th Design Review Board. We're actually starting that meeting early at 2:00 PM because we do anticipate that it'll be a lively discussion. And then it will be coming to the planning commission after it has gone to the Design Review Board. So that will be your August meeting, the 15th is what we're looking at for that. So just in terms of upcoming meetings on that one.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so bringing it back, since we don't have a quorum, then can we discuss an alternate time for these items?
Sure, sure. So we don't have enough members here tonight due to unexpected absence tonight to take action on either of the public hearings, the Hot Monk or the Ruby Pilates. And so what we are intending to do is see if we can find a meeting time, probably next week to do that. However, we can also, so we can't take action on the item. So we have to find another date for it. But we can take public comment tonight for those members who are here for the public. That way the commission has, can hear those and bring those forward. I don't know what, which you want to do first.
Yeah, so just, I guess we just go in order, see if there's any public comment for item 6A. And then 6B, and then we can talk about the alternate. And also just note, part of the reason we don't have the quorum as well is there is an open position.
Correct. Yes, we do have a planning commissioner who resigned. So if anyone out there listening is interested in applying, the city is currently accepting applications for planning commissioner for that vacancy. And it is through December of this year, at which point that term ends. And they would need to reapply, but obviously they'll have already gone through the process.
Okay. All right, so let's go to, see no statements of interest since we're not voting anything and no minutes to approve. So moving on to item 6A, and I'm just going to open it up for, do we need to go through the description of it?
So, yeah, I can do that real quick. So for item 6A, this is, Hot Monk is requesting a downtown noise permit to have outdoor music that exceeds the city's noise ordinance two days per month on Saturday and Sundays, starting at 4:30 and ending at 7:00 PM. We will give a full report at the, at the next meeting that we're going to be setting a date for. But if anyone does have any public comments regarding this, the application or the full report is available on the website. Chair, you could take public comment for that now.
Okay, so if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on item 6A, Hot Monk Downtown Noise Permit.
And again, you will have a chance to comment at the next meeting too. We just, I see members of the public here and I want to make sure that, we want to make sure that if you do want to make a comment tonight, in case you, in case you can't make it to the next meeting.
Okay.
So, and I do see Kyle Falbo has his hand raised.
Yep. All right, go ahead, Kyle.
So I'll just make this very quick. One, it is a little bit difficult to hear you guys. I don't know if the microphones are, and maybe Paul Fritz can reiterate maybe what it is that I'm experiencing in terms of the volume of the microphones. But in terms of this item here, I did see in the list of documents, a, looks like a quote for sound, sound dampening curtains. And I was just curious if there is maybe some comment that could be made as to the relevance of that? And is that's related to this item? Is there some sort of expectation that the applicant would be utilizing these, these curtains in some way? I don't, it just wasn't clear to me why that was there as a undescribed item. Thanks.
Thank you. And anyone else for comments on item 6A? Okay.
See any, I can respond so that we have been working with the Hot Monk. And yes, they did, they are looking at a number of different things, including some baffling up at that outdoor stage. And the, yeah, sound curtains and things like that, that might be, that they might be able to use to help mitigate some of the sounds and the noise. And again, we'll have the full discussion of that when we have the, the continued public hearing. And Kyle, I can look at that and see if there's some clarification of the staff report we can do for that too.
All right, so public comment is closed. I do have one little correction on that. On page one, project location and surrounding land uses. So it's saying that CVS is to the north and CVS is to the east with the feed, feed store and chase bank.
Thanks very much. There are other office buildings to the north, yeah.
Yeah.
Strike CVS and. Cool. Thank you for that correction.
All right.
And we will be continuing this public meeting to a date certain once we find a date. So that will happen shortly after we go through the same for the Ruby Pilates.
Okay, all right, so move on then to item 6B for Ruby Pilates Use Permit, 125 North Main Street.
Okay. And so this is a use permit application for a Pilates studio at the location 125 North Main that the chair noted. The zoning ordinance does require a use permit for exercise facilities within the downtown core district. Their hours of operation are requested generally from 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM, depending on the day, with appointments required. The classes are about 55 minutes in intervals and it's a pretty small group of people with a, culminating about five people. So this is a pretty small exercise facility, so to speak. And John is the planner for this. If we have any questions, otherwise we'll just dip into.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Yeah, okay. So we'll go ahead and open up public comment on item 6B.
My name is Norm Stupfeld and that's my wife Judy with me tonight. We had a courtship that, that lasted not too long. She went to San Jose State, lived in Sebastopol. I went to San Francisco State and I was wise. I went to San Francisco State, right there in town. And we, I got familiar with Sebastopol and I just thought it was a fantastic opportunity. Being both certified teachers and I couldn't just grasp on the opportunity of living place else when I saw what a wonderful little city this was, about 3,000 people in 1961. Well, anyway, it's grown and I have been very active myself in earlier years. We've been retired 27 years in, since 1995. And we've seen a lot of things come before city councils and planning commissions, et cetera. I have to tell you, there wouldn't be a theater there if I didn't tie in with Guy Durey many years ago, maybe 35 years ago. Planning Commission gave him the runaround. He came 10 times at least. On the 10th time, he had asked me to come and just see what was going on in there and why he was, they were just running him off to make changes. And I did, and they were going to run him off again. He started to leave the room. And he, he wanted to pay for it. He was a general contractor and had a big experience in Marin County, had the funding of it and all. I had to tackle him, I'm telling you, and he was a big man. He had drug me out a few chairs and I, "He's leaving," I told Planning Commission. And they couldn't believe it and they says, "Come back, come back, come back. We'll give you what you want," you know, backed down. And that was just great. And I, I don't take a lot of credit for that. I give him a lot of credit for being that persistent. And one-way streets, I would back that. And I don't know where we'd be today. You'd be backed up more than just a Bodega Road Highway going out to the, the western part of the county. And I feel as though I've seen a lot happen. The bleachers at the high school when I was president of Rotary, we were going to get metal bleachers.
I'm sorry, excuse me. So this is for item, specific item.
What I'm asking you is to do something sensible. And this application that's come across to have hours such as I read are just not in keep with Sebastopol. I remember well, when I was running my business, Carlson's, our business, on Main Street there, we occupied Silk Moon where Sweetie Print is and even had a shoe store across the street. We bought the Busy Bee. We were expanding. We were working hard. And if you know people that are in business for themselves today, they're either working real hard or they're going out of business. The hours at, at that time, I, I won't even try to explain it to you. But except to say from Thanksgiving, Black Friday, right up until January sale. And then for most of that month, we were busy, working the longest hours you could need. It's done a lot to break our bodies down and also in the process. And am I up? Well, I don't like the hours because 5 o'clock in the morning, we don't have the kind of security. You're going to have to have, have a full-time policeman watching that down there. Because I used to take night deposits down to the bank, West America. And I worried after 6 o'clock at night when it was dark during the normal hours. Daily saving time, it wasn't a problem, but after, Sebastopol dried up after, after 6 o'clock. And I used to worry about it even then. And I know that the crime rate is much higher at any level, any city, any geography today. I, I wouldn't wish that on them if they could be at Woken Noah Towers. Also, they're going to be wanting to use those parking places that are allocated throughout the downtown core. And we do drive through ourselves on occasion and.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please. You're way past the three minutes, but I'll give you some leeway.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And then we also have Mr. Falbo.
All right. Kyle, go ahead.
So, so I think that both of tonight's agenda items are really kind of speaking to what I'm kind of curious about, which is here we've got some zoning ordinance that's restricting the use of a business without some additional, you know, permission from a planning commission. And I'm wondering if many of these zoning ordinances might just be out of date. What is it specifically about exercise businesses that would require some sort of change of process for a business to open in our city? I've spoken with multiple business owners in the last couple of years and they've all, that I've spoken to that have opened businesses and they've all expressed just extreme slow pace of our city and getting the process of a business up and running in our city. And I'm wondering if things like this zoning ordinance can, are contributing factors to that? And if we, as a community, might want to start looking at some of these zoning ordinances with a wider scope and lens to understand maybe these things are, and coming from a past era where these things are not necessarily appropriate. But I would love to hear what the history of this particular zoning ordinance that makes such a restriction on exercise-type businesses in our downtown core. Thanks.
Thank you for that. And I don't think we have any other.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes, let me, I'll go ahead and close public comment. And go ahead.
Okay, and so I don't have much to say about the hours, other than I know the commission has been trying to enliven and expand hours in downtown with us. Obviously it'll be part of the planning commission's future deliberations. In terms of the background and, and Mr. Falbo, I, I will say we actually, as staff, we probably concur with this that there, and we have identified this as a potential change to the code. For exercise studios, we do require some sort of review in most zones. In all zones except for downtown, that is, that can actually be done by the planning director, which moves things along pretty quickly. And we also saw this with the Doggy Daycare. We had one on, I think only one of these had, yeah, Petaluma Avenue that, or South Main Street that we were able to do a very quick turnaround planning director hearing. Because it's easy to schedule. I'm at work, you know, four days a week. And it's, so, but in the downtown, both of that and exercise studios require a use permit, same thing. Different level of review at the planning commission. The reason for exercise studios requiring a use permit is because it does depend upon how intense it is. You can have like a 24-hour fitness where it's a 24-hour issue. But I have also seen where someone is trying to do like 30-person classes that overlap with the very small, you know, parking attributed to it. And it becomes an issue that way. I've also dealt with like the hot yoga or the drum beating yoga stuff. And so we do want to, you know, where it can really disturb adjacent businesses or upstairs neighbors. And so we, those are the things that as planning staff we look at when we're, we're looking at an exercise facility. The operation parameters are so broad that we just need to make sure that there's, you know, adjacent businesses can comment if it is something that's going to be very loud or change the temperature of the space in a way that's really going to affect upstairs living conditions, things like that. And I will note, we do actually have an upcoming hearing for Anytime Fitness because of potential parking concerns where they're proposed to locate. And so that actually may end up getting heard on the same night as this. But it's, so that, you know, that's very different from this. And so we, when John and I, and I think John brought it up that, hey, you know, five people, you know, maybe there's some different criteria or maybe this could be a different level of review as something to talk about as a potential. We have a list of zoning updates that we're hoping to do in this next year. That, that might be a good discussion point to have with you. So, so we're not deliberating that tonight, but in terms of the background of why we require use permits for a gym or a exercise facility.
And it also has to do a little bit with the formula business ordinance downtown as well, right?
That is actually separate. So we have a formula business ordinance, no matter if it's an exercise facility, a restaurant, a, a whatever, a real estate office. So that does deal with it as a separate thing. It's sort of like Starbucks, the use permit for the parking change that they made versus, as you, as you recall, that it was in a zone or in a shopping district that's exempt from the formula business. That could not be a criteria for what you were reviewing at that time. But the, the operational stuff of the use permit is.
Yep, and then we review that at the same time.
Correct.
All right. So I guess that does it for those two items. So let's talk about, we can schedule a special meeting.
Right, and I will check my text to see if. Okay, I do have a response back from Debbie who had a personal emergency. She said that she should be able to meet, make either the July 18th at 1:00 or July 25th at 6:00 PM, which is our regular meeting. If we do the 18th, we would have Debbie, you too. And then I don't know if Kestee may be able to attend remotely or not. If we do the 25th, that would kind of pack the agenda because we do have the Anytime Fitness use permit scheduled that night as well. So that would be three hearings in one night, which I don't know how many people will. I mean, you know, we did alert folks that this, we weren't going to have a quorum tonight. So I don't know how many folks may or may not show up.
Okay, my suggestion would be to have, continue this to the 18th and then have our regular meeting the following Tuesday so that it doesn't all get jammed up.
Couple of shorter meetings instead.
I guess my, my only concern would be that if, you know, most people that attend, especially remotely, you know, are more free in the evening, so I just would maybe have some concern that the 1 o'clock start time would be harder for people to attend. That, that would be my only, I mean, I'm available both days at those times, but that would be my concern about just public comment. I don't know how to determine that.
John, have we received public, other public comments about the Pilates studio or the Hot Monk that you know of? I have not received any on the Hot Monk, so.
No, for the Pilates studio, other than what's a part of the agenda packet, that's all the public comment that we received.
Which was quite substantial.
Quite a bit, yes.
Someone did their homework on that one.
Correct. But as far as the Hot Monk, I have not received anything either, public comment wise.
Okay, and really it's also a matter of facilities, right? Because to meet in the evening, we really wouldn't be able to do it other. Because to meet in the evening, we really wouldn't be able to do it other than a Tuesday and that's when the council's meeting, right? So that's, that's why...
Yeah, so on Tuesday, unfortunately, and we could normally push it to like 3 o'clock or something, however, we do have the environmental impact report for the Canopy, the 80-unit City Ventures project on the north side of town. We have the scoping meeting for that. So that's the public meeting where we open it up to the public for any comments on concerns that they want us to look into for the environmental impact report. And so that's scheduled at 3:00 PM on that, on the 18th. So unfortunately, we already have, we can't bump it closer to an evening meeting.
And other non-Tuesday days, I'm assuming is not available.
Well, we could probably find a time during the day, but we're not going to find anything in the evening because this room is blocked Thursday, yeah.
So the best we could do is another day, but at the same time, so it sounds like pretty close to that.
I don't really have a strong preference either way.
Okay, and if you want to take public comment, I do see Kyle's hand raised.
Okay, Kyle, go ahead. Do you have a comment on this?
I'm just hoping there's going to be public comment on the consent calendar.
There would be, but we're just going to continue that item to the next, to the next meeting as well, because we don't have a quorum to adopt anything tonight.
All right, well, I'll just say really quick, why don't you make that thing be absences, not just consecutive absences, because tonight is a clear example of absences being an issue for the planning commission. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I propose that we have a continuous meeting next Tuesday at 1:00 PM and then a regular meeting.
And Cody, does that work for you? Yeah, we already had you coming early that day anyway for the 3:00 PM, so, okay, cool. So we should, we know the room's available, so that's...
Yeah, I mean, I have the same concern about public as well, but, you know, our other alternative would be to wait till the following Tuesday and then everything is, it's going to be very difficult, a long meeting and, you know, people may not be able to comment there anyway, just because of the time.
And I do want to make sure we're responding, that we are responsive to the people trying to open a business in particular. The Hot Monk is already up and functioning, I think they're fine waiting a week or two, but...
Yeah, yeah, so I don't, yeah, I don't want to delay them another two weeks on that. Okay.
Okay, okay, so with that, we would need a motion and a second to continue item 6A and 6B, or you can do it separately if you want to, to the July, to a July 18th special meeting at 1:00 PM.
Okay, let's just go ahead and do it separately. So motion to continue item 6A to the Tuesday, this coming Tuesday at 1:00 PM.
July 18th.
July 18th, sorry.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Obviously, we don't have a quorum, but just to make sure we're covering all the bases here, just to be clear.
Okay. And then item 6B, also to move to the, continues to Tuesday, the 18th at 1:00 PM. So I make a motion for that.
And I second that.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and so we will have a special meeting July 18th and we will let all parties know at 1:00 PM who have submitted comments or who have, or the applicant in the case, since I think she probably gathered all those public comments and will know the context of information there, so. Great, thank you very much. Those items are completed.
And then item 7A, we're just going to...
I think we can, we, well, that's not an item we need to notice.
Because it's consent. And that'll be brought in.
Well, it's just not an item that needs, whether it's regular calendar item or consent, we just, it's not something that needs to, it just needs to be on an agenda.
Okay.
So I can work with you separately on the best time to reschedule.
Okay, sounds good. And I guess we'll skip the committee reports unless you have any, any planning director's report.
I think the one thing that I, so I just, so you all know what's going on, the city did adopt its budgets, both operating budget and capital improvement budget on June 28th. So we are, there's not a whole lot that affects you on that that you don't already know about. The park projects and whatnot are all in there as previously presented when Tony Britolero came with the CIP for consistency. The one comment that council did ask, or two council members at least asked us to, had interest in, asked us to look at was the potential for the Public Art Committee to maybe think about that being a subcommittee of the planning commission, because all of our, I mean, it came up in the budget discussion because they were meeting on Wednesday because they have a member who could not meet on Tuesday. But the cost of that with the room setup and everything was double what the other committee meetings we had were, because obviously we're doing all of our meetings on Tuesday otherwise. So, but they were, you know, one of the council members was also kind of just interested in budget. We are still at a, like a $2 million operating deficit this year, so there's still more revenue generation to look at, which I know council's looking at, I think, at their next meeting, the next couple of meetings and certainly looking at, as well as ways to look at cost savings. And so that was one of the things that they were curious about of, because all the public art is basically in a city park and you guys service the park commission, doesn't make sense to have that be a subcommittee. I did talk with the chair about that and we're having a meeting for the Public Art Committee on the 26th to talk about that a little bit further and just, you know, look at what might that, could that actually work better from the Public Art Committee in terms of their meeting? So it's not on our agenda to discuss tonight, but I did just kind of want to let you know. I know we have a park subcommittee already, so it could be kind of the same group that is, or just a, how that functions and interaction with the planning commission, if there would be a planning commissioner assigned to that. We can certainly talk offline if you have any thoughts about that, so I can maybe bring that up at our, or just kind of think about it. Again, new suggestion, but I'm always open to looking at new ways of doing things, so that is that component of it. Other updates, Woodmark Project has started their grading in earnest. If you've been by the site, it's a lot of dirt and that's what construction sites always look like at this point in time. So, but they started July 5th in earnest and that is for the first phase, which is the 48 units. The front building's basically, not the three rear buildings. The Habitat has submitted for a building permit for their four townhomes, so that was good news to hear. The city was awarded the quarter million dollar grant that I applied for, for, from ABAG to do, look at flexible zoning, commercial versus residential along our commercial corridors and also look at the revitalization of Redwood Marketplace at the north end of town. So I'm getting the grant stuff ready and meeting with the owner of Redwood Marketplace, hopefully later this week. I'm trying to make arrangements for that, so, so that's good news. That will be kind of one of your, the big work items over the next year. We also got approval to do the vehicle mile travel, VMT study with Fair and Pierce. I need to work, we need to work out the contract for that, but that'll also be started. That's the one that is being funded by a state grant. And so that does have, we'll be looking to do that project this fall. I do have the draft work plan update pretty much done. I think John and I had a couple of things to tweak on that. That was scheduled for the July 25th agenda, which we will probably still be able to get to since we have a separate meeting for this, so that's probably a good thing. Am I missing anything, John?
So Carrie mentioned the scoping meeting is set up for the Canopy project. We submitted the notice of preparation last week with the state clearinghouse and it's registered with the county clerk's office. So that project is moving forward. And last month, Sonoma County Transit Authority had their kickoff for the countywide active transportation plan. So I sit on that committee board and if anybody has any questions regarding that, that's the bike and pedestrian plan that goes through the county and local jurisdictions. I'd be happy to share those slides with you as far as their project breakdown and stuff like that. So it's going to be a couple-year project and they're planning on doing as much public input as possible throughout the whole process rather than certain periods. We also have, as part of that, some scheduled meetings for milestone updates from SCTA for that plan that will be coming to the planning commission. I think the first one is scheduled in September, so we'll have that as an informational item for the planning commission. And I think that's it.
And that, just to be clear, John, that is not a county, it is the countywide master plan, but it's, they're also updating the Sebastopol, what used to be our bicycle and pedestrian plan, which was adopted in 2010, 2011 and needs to be updated. So that will also be, part of that scope is to update the Sebastopol Active Transportation Plan, as they're now called, not bicycle pedestrian plans. So that is, and I believe that's through a grant that they got to do that. So that is a big lift for the city to be able to have that kind of support and still have John leading that project.
You have any questions, staff? And John, if you can put me, if you have an email group or any information, I'd be interested just to kind of get updates on some of that information if you happen to share it or...
Yeah, absolutely.
Stuff like that. And then Carrie, if it would help, I don't know if it would or not, but if you need someone to also meet with you and the Redwood Marketplace, I'd be available for that as well, if you thought it would be, to have another person there.
Thank you. This, the meeting we're trying to do is a real quick stuff, just to kind of outline what it is we're going to be doing, but thank you for future meetings, I probably will. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well then I'm going ahead and thank you for that. So just in summary, our next meeting for these, the two items that are continuing is next Tuesday, 1:00 PM here at this location. And then our regular meeting will be after that, the following Tuesday, the 25th. Okay, and go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Fernandez.
Recording stopped.